It was, um, I don't know.
Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on November 14, 2025. The meeting will convene at 6:00 PM and visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the requests to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the board president. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you're able to hear any discussion. Thank you. Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 1 and the Board of Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, December 15, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the Teaching and Learning Center at the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. Please visit our website, www OPS.org. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 1412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Teaching and Learning Center on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the pledge allegiance. Thank you. Vice President Snipes will lead us in the OPS Vision and Mission Statement.
Thank you, President Erdenberger. The vision: Every student, every day, prepared for success. And the mission: To prepare all students for success in college, career, and life.
Thank you, Vice President Snipes. Dr. McFarland, roll call, please.
Almanza. Erdenberger.
Present.
Hall.
Here.
Holman.
Present.
Crackey.
Here.
Magnusson.
Present.
Smith. Snipes.
Here.
Teelin.
Here.
Seven, present.
Thank you very much. We have a quorum. I will entertain a motion to excuse the absences of Ms. Alamanza and Mr. Smith, both of whom are unavailable tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Holman, seconded by Ms. Magnusson. Roll call, please.
Magnusson.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Teelin.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Seven, aye.
Thank you, everyone. Motion passes. Up next is the school spotlight. Please welcome Adams Elementary.
President Erdenberger, Vice President Snipes, members of the board, and Superintendent Ray, good evening. My name is Abigail Mitchell, and I serve as a first-grade teacher at Adams Elementary. It is my honor today to present Dr. Baquet as the OPS Proud Spotlight, as we recognize her continued efforts to move the data at Adams Elementary. Dr. Baquet was recently a recipient of the Light's Outstanding Principal Award, in which she was recognized for outstanding leadership and impact on students. This recognition is a direct reflection of the many intentional actions and accomplishments she leads each day, from the way she supports students and staff to the system she has strengthened within our building. Her impact is felt in every classroom, every hallway, and each child's smile. And if you spend even a single day at Adams, you can feel the energy, the purpose, and the positivity she has cultivated. She invests deeply in both data and relationships, and has established a shared sense of responsibility that keeps students at the center of every decision. To note a few accomplishments mentioned in contribution to this award that can illustrate for you just how profound her impact and leadership is, is the culture shift she led at an Adams exit from CSI and our EL proficiency jump from 6% to 67%. A shift rooted in collaboration, consistency, and a deep belief in our students' potential. She has set the tone of equity, efficacy, and lots of joy. She leads with integrity, courage, and compassion. And because of her, Adams Elementary isn't just a school, it's a place where everyone is known, valued, and believed in. Dr. Baquet's leadership doesn't just move the data, it also moves mindsets. It's my privilege to introduce her and highlight her hard work and continued commitment in moving Adams towards proficiency and the moon.
President Erdenberger, Vice President Snipes, members of the board, and Superintendent Ray, I apologize, I didn't know I had to make remarks as well. So I am ill-prepared, unlike my first-grade teacher here. This award was such a celebration of the work that all of us do at Adams. Each and every day, we show up ready to serve students and ready to welcome them every day. The community that we've built is just a true testament, and the achievement that we've made and the progress that we've made so far, we're just incredibly proud. I'm an incredible, proud leader of my team and the building and the students. And I think I said that again and again during the video. And I just walk the halls every day, just more and more proud of who we are, what we stand for, and what we believe in. And so, yeah. Ill-prepared. Thank you.
Do any board members have questions? Dr. Holman.
Thank you, President Erdenberger. Congratulations to you and all of you and your staff's hard work. I missed the data point that was shared. Was it, did she say 6% to 67%?
Yep. So my first year, this is my fifth year at Adams, so when I arrived, we were making 6% on track or partial progress toward EL proficiency. And so we're at the 67%, 67.65% EL proficiency for our EL students. And that's, you know, that's just best practices all around. And so that has impacted all of our students, not just our EL students. And so instructionally, we're just making gains across the board because of the practices that they've adopted in their classrooms. And so, yeah, that's where we're at.
That's incredible. Congratulations to you all. Can you share with us, I know you said it has a lot to do with best practices, but what else can you attribute to such a steep incline in this proficiency?
I think initially, so my first year there, I think I was the only one with my EL endorsement when I arrived. And so there, it was just understanding that all of our EL students are all of our students. And so they're not just getting served by the EL teacher that's doing that, you know, service when they're pulling out, but it's really what instructionally can we provide in the classroom that's going to meet the needs? Because we know it's speaking, listening, reading, and writing. And so they're great reading teachers, and they're great writing teachers, but how are we pulling out of those specific students more skills that are leaning toward that listening and speaking area? And so first, it was just understanding our data and what, where we can push specific students in those specific areas. And I will, anything that you throw at this team, they're ready to just bite on. And so that's just really a testament to them, just their willingness to tackle any challenge, really.
Congratulations to you, most specifically, but also congratulations and thank you to the work and dedication of your staff as well.
Anybody else have a question? I was just going to ask who all these little people are.
Yeah. So our counselor, instructional facilitator, kindergarten and first-grade teacher, kindergarten first-grade teacher, first-grade teacher. They looped this year, and so we've gotten to, they've gotten to teach the same students two years in a row, which has been a really impactful practice that we tried. And then my family, so my very supportive husband, Mr. Baquet. And then my four kiddos, Winona's waving, she's four, and Sullivan, and Oliver, and Sloan. And they are students here, Omaha Public Schools at Dundee. And all four of them will be there next year, actually, so one drop-off for us. Hooray!
Well, welcome everybody and supportive husband nicely done. Did you have a question? Mr. Teelin.
So to put you a little bit on the spot.
Uh-oh.
As you look over this last five years, Dr. Holman asked about, you know, what, the inputs and the influences that have gotten to this point. Can you speak at all to any changes in district resources or district supports that have helped in your efforts?
I can name specifically being more focused, and I think being able to hone in on a singular focus specifically in the last two years in around literacy is tremendously helpful as a leader, especially when you're not trying to spread yourself so thin in tackling a bunch of different goals. And so you can really narrow that focus and then go really, really deep. So that's incredibly helpful. And then you can allocate the people that you do have to tackle that goal as well. So we have, you know, health aides that are willing to jump in on the literacy goal. So they know that, like, hey, if I have this student here, but we could be working on, I could read with them, because they're, you know, sitting here. Or I have reading interventionists that now are very, the focus is there. And so that's a resource that, I don't know that that's necessarily a resource, but it's a strategy that's allowed us to just really narrow our focus. I think the instructional materials that we've been provided, and that's historically true, have been really high-quality. And that speaks to the team that invests their time in really looking at high-quality materials. And then just being very open to teacher feedback. So they're willing to give it, and they're willing to listen. And so that has to stay true to keep moving forward.
Thank you very much.
Well, if you would come up and give us a chance to shake your hands and bring your kiddos to, because I'm going to give them some. Thank you very much, and congratulations again to all of the Adams Elementary staff, regardless of their size. Next, we have Superintendent comments. Mr. Ray.
Good evening, President Erdenberger, Vice President Snipes, members of the board and our community. Tonight's staff will present attendance data from the 24-25 school year. You'll see we have more students attending more often and fewer facing chronic absenteeism. We want students at school engaged in learning. There is a great work, there is great work by families and staff underway, partnerships that identify attendance barriers and address them. We are especially excited by schools applying improvement sciences to attendance. Teams are studying the data, quickly testing ideas for change and measuring outcomes. This approach lets us see what works and apply those strategies to other schools. ENSCAS results and AQuest classifications will be coming out, of course, during Thanksgiving week. We anticipate the Nebraska Department of Education will release that student data from the last school year. You'll hear ENSCAS, the state standardized test, and AQuest, the state classification system. This information is very important. It's also one of many data points we use to measure student growth and proficiency. As we work every day to do better, teachers are using real-time feedback to tailor lessons and support student success. Once the reports are public, we will have analysis on our website and in district newsletters. We will share how schools use all that information to improve outcomes. A copy of tonight's congratulations report will be on all school and district homepages tomorrow, celebrating student and staff achievements. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Ray. We move on now to board member comments. Ms. Crackey? No? Ms. Magnusson?
Thank you, President Erdenberger. First, I wanted to say thank you to everyone who attended my town hall on November 11. We met at Buffett Middle's Cozy Library and talked about the moonshot, about gate programming, library partnerships, and some other topics. I think it went well, and I look forward to having another one. I don't know when it'll be, but I will let you know. I also wanted to point out that on our website, we have this thing called the Community Resource Directory, and it has 18 pages of excellent resources for you. There's information on the Assessor's Office, Salvation Army locations, all the YMCA's, job search assistance, the Child Saving Institute. So it's just a really great resource for whatever it is you need. You can search for Community Resource Directory on the website, and that should pull it right up for you. I also wanted to say that I hope everyone sticks around for the whole meeting. We'll be looking at some particularly interesting statistics. As Mr. Ray intimated, we'll be talking about some attendance statistics and other information like that. There's a great presentation on it. And I'll also be giving a budget and audit committee update, which I think is particularly important, because I'll be outlining information we've received from the Nebraska Department of Education about our budget and how we're likely to take a $60 million hit for the next two years. So please hang out and listen to that pertinent information. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Magnusson. Ms. Bree? Ms. Full, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Thank you. I don't mind, Ms. Bree, that kind of sounds fun. Well, I just wanted to take a little bit of time to talk a little bit about food insecurity tonight. I wanted to start by saying thank you so much for the feedback, for the stories, the emails, the calls about food insecurity and the issues that we're experiencing in our school district. It's helped me a lot try to decide how we're going to move forward and address this issue with our community in mind. So I really appreciate that support. I introduced a food resolution, or a food insecurity resolution, that does two things. It would eliminate school debt, any school lunch debt, and it would pay for school lunches through the end of the semester. And why did I introduce this resolution? Well, for the last, basically since COVID, we've been paying for all school lunches for all students. But this year, we actually went back to having some students pay for their school lunch. So we have several programs that actually cover school meals for our students. We have the CEP program, or the Community Eligibility Provision, which basically says if there's a certain amount of kids in that school district who are already receiving free and reduced lunch, they're already receiving Medicaid, or getting assistance from TANF, which is the Temporary Assistance for Needful Families Fund, then everybody in that school gets a free lunch. We're not going to bother ourselves with trying to reach out to every student in that school, because we know enough of them need the help. So we have that program, and we also have our Free and Reduced Lunch Program. So that means if you make below a certain amount, you can either qualify for a free lunch, excuse me, or reduced lunch. And 70%, 75% of our students actually qualify for free or reduced lunch. So why, why would we want to go back to funding all school lunches? Why is that a thing that we would want to do? Well, research shows that universal school lunches can increase literacy rates. Wonder why we would want that, you know? It's not like we're shooting for the moon or anything. It improves attendance, and it reduces stress on students and administrators around lunch debt. We also know that there are rising costs that our families are experiencing around, you know, the cost of living, around groceries, healthcare, everything is going up. It's making it a lot harder to afford everyday items and the things that we need in order to survive, especially things like food. And we know that there's currently gaps that exist within the programs that are offered. So with our Free and Reduced Lunch Program, I went ahead and looked myself on NDE's website, or the Nebraska Department of Education, and for a family of two, someone can only make $27,000 a year in order to qualify for free lunch, and $37,000 a year in order to qualify for reduced lunch. So that's not a lot of money. And I know that if, you know, a parent with one kid in the district who's making $40,000 can't receive assistance, I know there's something wrong with that, because nobody can support themselves and a child with $40,000 a year. So that's really the people that I'm trying to reach with this. There's also barriers to applying for free and reduced lunch. There are people that don't know, you know, the school district does a really good job with advertising and making sure, you know, doing their darndest to make sure that everybody knows about this program and how to apply. But even still, there are gaps that exist that make it hard for people to apply or know about the program to apply in the first place. There's also barriers to applying when we talk about our immigrant and refugee populations. I don't know about you, but I think lately, especially immigrant and refugee populations or families, aren't really interested in handing over any information about themselves, the size of their family, how many people are in their family, how much money they make. I don't really think that's information they would be comfortable sharing. And that's actually some testimony that I received from someone personally about how that, that, you know, fear is stopping them from applying for free and reduced lunch. So I also have seen there are some problems with uniformity in the way that the lunch debt is handled school to school. So from what I understand, the research that I have done, the staff members that I've talked to, the principals- talked to, the principals that I've talked to, there has been no official guidance from the district about how to handle the large amounts of school lunch debt. Because like I said, we used to cover school lunch, and we didn't have big accumulations of debt because of that. But now we have reverted back to how we used to do it, and so schools, from what I've heard, are doing it a little bit differently everywhere. And so I think with this resolution, it kind of sets the record straight. It says, you know, there's no more school lunch debt. You don't even have to worry about that kind of stuff. Admin doesn't even have to worry about it. It's handled the same across all schools. So this is, this resolution is a short-term solution to eliminate the school lunch debt and to pay for universal student lunches for the rest of the semester. And this is why I think this is a temporary solution. There is no way for us to fully measure and reach all students who need help because of the nuance of the situation. Like I said, there are lots of problems as to why kids are not, our kids are accumulating school debt, kids don't qualify for free and reduced lunch. There's a whole bunch of reasons. I've named some, but there's even more nuance to that. And there's no way that we can possibly measure how many students need help, especially in situations where they don't want to reach out in the first place because they're scared. They're scared for their families. So admin is already trying to focus on the moonshot, and I do not think this is a good way to spend our time. I think that we need to be focusing on our moonshot, getting every kid to reading level by 2030, and I don't think that administrators need to be worrying themselves with trying to call home or send emails or letters about collecting school lunch debt. I just don't think it's a good, a good way to spend our time right now. One of the last things I'll say is, you know, I explained the Community Eligibility Program, and with that program, only 25% of the students in the school have to meet that threshold in order for the whole school to qualify for free and reduced lunch. Only 25%. 75% of our students in OPS receive free and reduced lunch. I am using the same argument that the CEP program uses for our schools. Enough of our students receive assistance that we might as well just give it to all of them because the CEP program exists to simplify and expand access to free school meals in high-poverty areas by eliminating the administrative burdens of collecting fees and reduced-price applications. It allows eligible schools to offer breakfast and lunch at no cost, which helps students reduce hunger, it improves attendance, and it minimizes the stigma associated with receiving free meals. So as we move forward into the future, I am looking forward to working with other board members about more sustainable solutions, about how we can go back to offering universal student lunch. That is something that I would personally like to work towards for our students. There are other school districts in the state that have figured out how to do this. We don't have to look too far. Lincoln Public Schools has offered universal student lunch to their students. They have figured out a way to partner with their community, with the foundations, in order to get it done. And this was actually a four-year agreement as a part of their kind of overall strategy for the next four years about how to make sure their students receive the education they deserve. So there's also Senator Michaela Kavanaugh's bill. She told me that she's going to be prioritizing her bill to make universal school lunch a thing in Nebraska, which I'm very excited for. And I think there are so many possibilities as to how we could ultimately get there, as to how we could make sure every child eats, no matter what income bracket they are in, no matter what zip code they live in. So with all that being said, I'm going to wrap up, and I just want to also kind of say I don't personally think this resolution was going to move forward without some drastic action on my part, which is why I have kind of gone to the effort of making this publicly aware and, you know, getting support and trying to get the other board members to understand where I'm coming from and where the gaps exist. So that's why I did what I did. That's why I introduced this resolution. I am looking forward to working with the board members toward a solution where all kids can eat, no matter what, and do not eat school lunch debt, because kids need help as soon as possible. So I hope that we can get this done quickly. That is all. And I have all the research and the references for you that I mentioned in my testimony. I know you like it when people... Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Full. No other board member will be debating the merits of this proposed action on their board comments tonight. Given the risk that a discussion about a matter that is not on the agenda could lead to an issue with the Open Meetings Act, our practice is to limit our formal discussion to items that have been put on the agenda and publicized. In her comments, Ms. Full suggests that she has identified an issue and, based on the numerous phone calls, emails, and questions the other board members have received, has represented that the other board members do not care about that issue. On behalf of myself and the other board members, I can assure the Education Committee that nothing is further from the truth. In fact, she has not clearly identified the gap she is trying to fill, or more to the point, the group of students she believes are in danger of being denied a meal at school, nor has she engaged her fellow board members in any kind of discussion other than the one we just had, or shared the latest proposed resolution with the majority of board members. I have no record that she even sent it to me. To date, Ms. Full has failed to take the basic steps necessary to fully understand the fiscal, legal, and practical implications of her proposed response, though the administration and others have attempted to fill this gap. Instead of engaging fellow board members and the administration in a productive discussion, she has created a great deal of confusion among the board and the community as to the state of meals that are provided at our schools, what gaps might exist, and how her proposal addresses those gaps, and in the process, has created unnecessary conflict among board members and between the board and administration. Given our current political environment, I can't blame Ms. Full for thinking this strategy is likely to be successful or that it is acceptable, but we cannot devolve into the politics that makes decisions based on slogans rather than substance. Here are the facts. The 100% free lunch program for the last three years was not a decision made by the district. It was a designation from the federal government. That designation lapsed last spring, and all families were notified last spring that the full free lunch program was no longer available to the district. Nevertheless, every one of our 52,000 students has access to a free breakfast every day. Every student in 77 of our schools and programs, regardless of financial status or, financial or other status, has access to a free lunch of their choice every day. In 21 schools, families that qualify for free and reduced lunch may apply to do so. No student is forced the stigma of taking a cold lunch. That is not happening. Every student that earns the required number of credits, regardless of lunch, or band uniform, or library, or whatever other debt, will graduate. The other board members agree that best practice for a matter to be brought to the board's attention and successfully adopted is to identify a concern, bring a specific proposal to board leadership, and meet with the administration to identify any legal, financial, or practical considerations to be taken into account. That proposal is usually revised based on that feedback and shared individually with other board members for their input. Finally, board leadership or an appropriate committee will bring the proposal to the entire board for consideration at a public meeting. In this case, the concern was not brought to board leadership. It was not reviewed for legal, financial, or practical considerations with the administration, and it was not shared with most board members before being submitted to be included on the agenda. With that review process and opportunity for questions and discussion missing, it would have been malpractice for board leadership to bring it in front of the board for consideration. I want to be very clear. Preparing every one of our students for success in college, career, and life is the mission of this board and the district, and we all take it very seriously. Members of this board and the administration represent many decades, maybe hundreds of years, just Superintendent Ray alone, of work toward that end. Mismanagement of this discussion has created confusion in the community, violated board protocol about taking board business directly to school staff, and interfered with our ability to efficiently work together as a board and with the administration and with our families and stakeholders on the extraordinarily important work of educating our students. It takes a village, and we are one. To address this situation, I have taken the initiative to ask Ms. Full and members of the administration to meet with me and Vice President Snipes so Ms. Full can clearly identify the group of students she believes are in danger of being denied a meal at school. We can then determine how to address any gaps in a coherent and efficient manner, share the concern and solution with other board members, and then bring it to the table for a vote. At this point in time, Ms. Full has repeatedly indicated that she will not attend that meeting. Thank you very much. We will now move on to public comments. I have the next item is public comment. We have five speakers who have submitted requests to speak forms. The board has adopted policy 8346, which limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. Dr. McFarland will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. We understand that people have strong feelings about issues that may be raised, so we ask that you refrain from applause or other outbursts during their comments, including board members. If the subject of your public comments is related to a specific student or staff member, please do not identify the student or staff member and instead provide that information to Dr. McFarland. She will assist us in looking into your concerns. Pursuant to the requirements specified in Nebraska Revised Statute 841412, unless the requirement is waived for security reasons, please state and spell your last and first name, state your current address, and let us know if you are here representing any organization before you begin your public comment. There are no requests for a waiver this evening. In addition, we ask that you remain seated until called to the podium. Please remain at the podium and do not approach the board table. If you have any materials to distribute, please let me know, and Dr. McFarland will come get them from you. As a final note, public comment is set aside for you to comment on matters which you wish to present to the board. Board members will not respond during public comment. If you would like to discuss anything with a member of the board, please feel free to contact them or the appropriate member of the staff directly. It is now 8:30, uh, 6:37, sorry, everybody. It is now 6:37, and our first speaker is Ms. Anna Peters.
Hi, I'm Anna Peters, A-N-N-A-P-E-T-E-R-S. My address is 4223 North 93rd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68134. And I want to apologize for my informal attire. It's Spirit Week at school, so today was pajama day. At least I'm not wearing fuzzy slippers. I'm actually here today, my topic of the day, is about block scheduling in middle school and how terribly, horribly awful it is and how we really, really, really need to get rid of it. And I could give you about 100 reasons, but I've decided to go with one example. My students have 74 minutes of math. Last Friday, I taught my algebra kids how to do recursive rules for arithmetic sequences. Tomorrow at noon, they'll have a quiz on that. They haven't seen it since last Friday because we only see them every other day. In between now and then and now, they've also read Malala's speech to the General Assembly of the UN and had to come up with the reasons why that might be related to their experiences with education. They learned about alleles and genomes in science and applied that to an imaginary alien that they are creating. They studied the difference between federalism and representative democracy, learned how to play bat midden, read the Taletale Heart, learned, practiced, began learning, two new pieces of music in band, studied French verb conjugations, don't ask me how to do those, and started setting SMART goals in their college and careers class in preparation for the career fair on Friday. And they're 13. So 10 classes is a lot, and yeah, that's only five a day, but that means there's 10 things from when they did math to when they have to do it again. And then they get 74 minutes, and then 10 classes and 48 hours later, they have 74 minutes again to try to do all of the stuff that we used to do in 50 minutes every day. It's a lot for me. I'm pretty sure that was a lot of a list for you to hear. Now imagine if you're 13 and you're trying to keep up with all of that. If we went back to class every single day, first of all, they'd actually be able to get a little bit of math, and then a little bit, and a little bit, and it would not, if they miss one class, they don't miss as much. They don't go from recursive rules to a test and miss the piece in between. They only miss a piece of a week's worth of lessons instead of a lesson that counts as a whole week. And if they had the same classes every single day, our poor sixth graders would be a lot less lost, and that'd be really nice. If you're ever there at the beginning of the school year and you're trying to help them find their rooms, and they're like, wait, what's an A-Day again? Wait, what's it mean B-Day? Wait, which class am I going to right now? Day after day after day, it takes them weeks to figure out where they're supposed to go. And then in January, we switch all the electives and they get to figure it all out again. That's hard when you're 11. All of it is really hard on our kids, and then they have to sit for 74 minutes. And I know I'm supposed to teach where the kids get up and move around, and they talk and everything like that, but I've got a curriculum this long and a time this long, and I don't always have time to let them get up and move because do you have any idea how long it takes to get 27 kids to sit back down again? A long time, and I haven't got it. So to say, well, let's get them up and moving in the middle of the 74-minute class is obviously somebody who hasn't sat in a class of 24 13-year-olds for 74 minutes lately. Realistically speaking, that's just so hard. Block scheduling at the middle school level is hard. And I'd really, really, really like to see it gone, and as near as I can tell, so is every single other kid in my, teacher in my building and kid in my building, and I'd really love to know whose idea it was that we should keep on doing something. It's so hard for our little kids.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Michelle Rogers.
Hello, Michelle Rogers, M-I-C-H-E-L-L-E-R-O-D-G-E-R-S, 15565 Adams Street, number 303, Omaha, 68137. I'm here for the same reason that I have been for the last couple of years. So just a quick comment, though, you know, I'm here, like, do you really think I want to be up here at least twice a month talking on the same issue? No, I don't. I have a very busy life, and I have such an amazing job and such an amazing life that, I mean, I don't want to come up here and talk about this. However, my job is to also make sure that... However, my job is to also make sure that the public is more than aware as to what is in the school libraries. It may not be necessarily to get these books, or it is a goal to get these books taken off, and I do understand that there is a process. However, I also want to make sure that parents are aware what is in the school libraries, too. So, you know, it makes me uncomfortable at times reading this. So, and I definitely understand that it can make others feel uncomfortable. Well, then, why is it in the school libraries if it's making other people feel uncomfortable as I'm reading it, too? Because I don't like to read it. It makes me feel gross inside, too. So with that being said, the book that I am going to talk about, though, is called Sold. This is the top, this is number two on the list of the most banned books in the United States. It's banned in actually 20 different school districts, and it's rated a level of five out of five for its content. That is bad. So this is in actually 11 schools within OPS. So again, this is, I'm not going to water it down, I'm going to literally just read exactly what it says, but please know that my heart is for the children, and so that is why I'm doing this as well because, well, one, we are also aware of the process, but the last time that somebody tried to challenge a book, it got the same book that was banned, put more books into the libraries. So that kind of doesn't really help us out either. So again, this is from the book Sold, and on page 120, it starts with, "A man with lips like a fish comes into my room and says, 'You're lucky to be with Habib.' He is squeezing my breasts with his hand like someone is shopping for a melon. I try to push him away, but my arms, stone heavy from the last, he doesn't move. The fish man, or the fish lips man, removes my dress. I wait for myself to protest, but nothing happens. Then he is on top of me and something hot and assistant is in between my legs. He grunts and struggles, trying to fit himself inside of me. With a sudden thrust, I am torn into two. I hear coming from a distance a steady thud, thud, and a register that is the sound of a headboard hitting a wall. And after a while, I don't know how long, another sound interrupts the thud of the headboard. I know this sound from somewhere. I worked very hard to make it out. I finally identify it, and it is the muffled sound of sobbing. And then I understand, I was the person crying." Page 123. "And in between men come. They crush my bones with their weight. They split me open, then they disappear. I cannot tell which of these things that they do to me are real and which are nightmares. Everything is a nightmare. It is unbearable. I am hurt. I am torn and bleeding where men have been. I pray to the gods to make the hurting go away, to make the burning and the aching and the bleeding stop."
One minute.
So I'm just gonna just end by saying this, that, you know, I don't want to come up here. I'd much rather be cozy in my own home, just doing something more with my time and feeling like I'm being heard. And please know that I know that you guys are on the board for a reason because you guys, I know that you guys do love the children, but I will continue to speak about this because this is very important to me, and all those faces are telling me to still keep on speaking.
Thirty seconds.
So even if nothing's being done at this point, I will keep speaking until something is done. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Michaela Kazor.
My name is Michaela Kazor, M-I-C-H-A-E-L-A-K-A-Z-O-R, and my address is 1010 North 192nd Court in Elkhorn. Good evening, Superintendent Ray, members of the board, and the community. I just want to first thank you all for all that you do. I know you have so much on your plates that you work, you know, normal jobs and then you're on the board. I know that's a lot and a lot to juggle. So I first want to thank you for all the sacrifices that you've made to help the next So I have been speaking at these board meetings for the past four years since I was 16 years old because I deeply care about every child that's in this district. And I do, I want to appreciate, I really appreciate the board members that approached me before this meeting to just clarify some things about the policy procedures. I truly appreciate it. I really, I appreciate that, and I'm thankful for that conversation because it shows that we're still human and are able to talk to each other, so thank you. However, I just continue coming and speaking because the books, like the one that the previous speaker spoke on, is absolutely disgusting, and that's why I will continue speaking as well. I began speaking at 16 years old during the statewide proposal of the new sex ed curriculum changes, and then hearing about critical race theory and then learning about OPS's sexual education curriculum, it all just really blew me away, and I had no idea that that was in the district or, you know, that the state was trying to push it, which, praise God, that they didn't adopt it. But then I began speaking on the library books in 2024 because I was absolutely disgusted when I found out that minors in this district had access to pornographic material. Since I began speaking, I've met with the former board president on the process of how to get the books removed, where I understood that the parents can raise the concern to the principal that they attend, and then it makes it to the administration where then the book review committee reviews the books, and then the committee makes a recommendation to the board. From my understanding, the board then votes based on the recommendation. And as the speaker, the previous speaker alluded to, in 2023, there were a book review on the books, All Boys Aren't Blue and Tricks, but then ultimately it went through the whole process, and then the board got it and then voted on it, kept it in the books, kept the books in the schools, and then the books, since there had to be 15 books for the review process, 15 new books were added to the shelves. And so that's why I haven't gone through that process because I realized that even if I went through the whole process, it ultimately would come back to the board, and then based on the recommendation, then it would just be voted to be kept in the schools. So that's why I haven't gone through that review process because it just seems pointless because it's still going to be kept in the books, the books are still going to be kept in the schools. So my response is, why are the books recommended by the review committee to be kept in the schools? Like, why? We read the books every single week or every single board meeting, and it's undefensible that those, this content is pornography, it's talking about sexual content. It's undefensible. And then when I was doing research on it, it was ultimately, it came down to just equity and inclusion, and that's why the books were kept in the schools. So that's why I just continue speaking. I haven't gone through the process because it just seems pointless because people have done it before and it resulted in the same result of keeping the books in the schools. So I just ask that, we're just, we're gonna continue speaking, and I want the community to be, know that, as Romans 831 says, that if God is for you, who can be against you? And to come speak at these board meetings because your voice can make a difference. So thank you so much. I know that that's not what I originally was going to speak on. I know it's not on my sheet, but it does, I wanted to speak on that today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Ms. Susan Toohey.
Hello, Susan Toohey, S-U-S-A-N-Tooey, T-O-O-H-E-Y. I'm at 750 Ferry Acres Road, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. A proud member of the Omaha Public Schools Network, live in the district, and have lots of family here, graduates of it, and I am alum of OPS as well. I'm here today because there has been a lot of discussion about the urge to ban and restrict the materials our children are reading in the Omaha Public Libraries and in public schools. I believe that books offer a unique opportunity for students, teachers, and parents to engage in thoughtful, meaningful conversations. The quote that was read to you just now from the book Sold is about sexual trafficking, and it's a reality, and it's a really hard subject. It's not pornography. It's about social systems that have been broken and how we need to address them and fix them. Pornographic material has a very specific definition, and OPS does not break that rule. They are not offering pornographic material in their libraries. I get upset and angry about people trying to take away my child's right to read what finds them in their society. All students are valued. All students should have access to materials that show them in literature, in history, and in expression. It is vital to provide opportunities for open dialogue and critical thinking. By encouraging parents and children to read together, we can foster understanding and empathy, helping young readers to navigate these complex ideas in a safe and supportive environment. Books aren't scary. The internet's pretty scary. But books give a chance for us to slowly digest information, ask questions, and have conversations. I'm sorry that some people are uncomfortable with some materials, and if they make you uncomfortable, please don't read them. But I hope you would because maybe we could understand each other better and understand our world better. OPS does have a process for challenging books, and I think it's a good process, and I think it works. I would love to have a conversation with my neighbors here to understand their perspective better because I don't think I will understand them better unless we are in personal dialogue. So I'm open to that. Thank you for protecting the intellectual freedom of our students in the Omaha Public Schools. Thank you for protecting our democracy. Free people, read freely. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our last speaker will be James Krenz.
My name's James Krenz, J-A-M-E-S-K-R-E-N-Z, and I'm here on behalf of my clients, so do...
Could you provide your address, please?
Can I get a confirmation if you need my personal address or the organization address?
The one you wrote down on the form here?
7315 Maple Street, Suite 2, Omaha, Nebraska, 68134. Sorry if I left off the zip code. And I'm here today because of, you know, what I heard from Mrs. Full, and thank you, Mrs. Erdnberger, for some of your clarity. Hopefully, there will continue to be more clarity and transparency, particularly for our ESL clients that we have, the refugee and immigrant clients, who may not be so eloquent with their English, and hopefully they'll be able to, it will be in a way that a layperson can understand. So I just want to say, so my name's James Krenz. I grew up on the East Coast, I'm not from here. I wanted to speak on the lunch situation, obviously, and I'm sure lunches here are great. I've never had chili or, and the cinnamon rolls, I'm sure that's, that's great as well. What I do know is it's difficult for a lot of these kids to advocate for themselves, especially when they're children, especially when they're, when they're learning English and English isn't their first language. They're also learning a completely new culture and legal system and society. And, you know, with that being said, you know, I was, I was briefly emancipated while I was nearing my end of my high school. Luckily, since then, you know, and I was experiencing some homelessness. Before that, my father was in the military, so I was able to, during that time, get free lunches through, through that. I don't know if Omaha does that, I hope they do. Oftentimes, I would take the money that I earned at my job that I would go to after football practice and then also get a second lunch on top of the free lunch. That's just me, though, so. But I know when I was emancipated, I lost that benefit, and I had to continue paying for my only lunch. I'm sure I could have applied and received SNAP benefits, but, you know, I didn't know how to do that myself. I didn't know how to advocate for myself, and I know we have a few other jurists in the room, but I think we all, both you know that, and as well as I know what Abraham Lincoln said about those who do pro se advocacy for themselves, right? Like, you know, if you represent yourself, you have a fool for a client, or something along those lines. I'm probably missing the quote a little bit, I'm a little nervous. So mainly, I wanted to focus on our clients who are losing SNAP eligibility because of, I don't call it by the other name, but HR1. There's even further confusion that's coming from, and I'm, you know, I'm sure, I'm not sure how many of you are aware of all this, but, and there's so much to be aware of, so I just want to make you aware of it. FNS specifically in their guidelines, so in HR1, it says, those with, that have gotten green card status are here, here and forward eligible for SNAP benefits, humanitarian immigrants such as, you know, refugees, victims of human trafficking and sex trafficking, victims of domestic violence under the VAWA Act, who else? SIVs, those are special immigrant visas, so that's, those are individuals from Iraq or Afghanistan who helped the United States military in some capacity, surely helped my father.
One minute.
Thank you. Anyways, I'll, I'll kind of catch up, I'm getting a little long-winded. I do, I do agree with you that we need more than slogans and not substance. I do think if we're going to continue down this path of not ensuring food for every kid, which I'm curious to see how that's going to affect the Superintendent Ray's study on high attendance in the future. I do agree that we need slogans, not substance, but we can at least be intellectually honest in that case.
Thirty seconds.
If we're not going to do that, we can change the sign up front to say, instead of every kid, every day, what's the last part? Every kid, every day? Yes, thank you. Instead of that, we can say, some kids, some days, hungry for success, if we're going to apply this standard. And I thank you for your time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, and that completes our public comment. We're going to move on to the consent agenda, and at this time, any board member may request that any item on the consent agenda be removed from the consent agenda and be considered and voted on separately. At this time, are there any items board members would like to pull from consent? Are there any abstentions?
Yes, President Erdnberger, I will be abstaining from Claim C, item I-6, from my role on the Omaha Schools Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you identify it again? What was the number?
Claim C, item I-6.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Magnusson, seconded by Dr. Holman. Roll call, please.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Magnusson.
Aye.
Zevanay.
Sorry, thank you very much. Motion passes. Now we will move on to information items. Item J1A is the District Attendance Analysis, Analysis, and our speaker is Ms. Kami Picota, sorry.
Education, and Superintendent Ray. I am Kami Picota. I am the supervisor of attendance and school support liaisons. I'm here tonight with Lisa Utterback, Chief Officer of Student Community Services. We are here to share the 2024-2025 Attendance and Absenteeism Summary Report in conjunction with the submitted receipt of report as noted on tonight's agenda, along with information around our efforts to support attendance, our priorities, and next steps. Chronic absenteeism, missing 10% or more of your school year, continues to be a national concern and one addressed daily in the Omaha Public Schools. Last year, we shared priorities and our next steps to decrease absenteeism. Tonight, we will share progress made and the data that reflects those efforts. School connectedness and increased communication remains a focus. Supporting our students and families through tiered systems, ensuring timely... Supporting our students and families through tiered systems, ensuring timely and effective resources are available to strengthen relationships. Additionally, attendance team members continue to meet with students and families, developing collaborative attendance improvement plans. Starting in the spring, we applied improvement science, the same approach discussed at a recent board workshop. This collaborative effort fostered rapid cycles of improvement, providing a structure to a systems approach, aligned goals, aligned behaviors, and aligned processes. Our commitment to improving attendance and the opportunity to support our students and families is unwavering, as we work together towards good attendance for every student every day. During the 2024-25 school year, our district achieved a 2.1 percentage point increase, 1,230 more students attending school 95% or more of their school year, as well as a 1.8 percentage point decrease, or 714 students who were no longer chronically absent. This positive shift in data aligns with our priorities and practices for success. Our focused efforts and collaborative approach are producing results, and we are moving in the right direction. Excused versus unexcused absence codes have been relatively consistent over the past three years. Most absences, 68% or higher, have been unexcused absences, to include absence, unverified, and truant coding. A slight increase of just over 3% emphasizes the need for stronger communication between families and schools. Looking specifically at the type of absence codes and grade levels, this slide illustrates that unverified is the highest absence type across all levels. Unverified increased at all grade levels between the 23-24 and 24-25 school year, and typically increased as students got older. We make every effort daily to connect and communicate with our families regarding absences and the reason for their child's absence. Our efforts include daily auto attendance calls across every level, and at the secondary level, a text message, keeping in mind that if families do not have a cell phone, that the text message would be sent in the form of an email, both requesting a family to respond to the reason for the absence. Finally, in addition to daily auto attendance calls and text messages, at many of our schools and programs, secretaries and other school staff reach out to inquire about absences. With that said, unverified and absent codes made up nearly 70% of all absences during the 2024-25 school year. The unverified code is highest at the high school level, where absenteeism is most pronounced. It is worth noting that 69% of all unverified absences are for less than a full day, and about 80% of all unverified high school absences were for less than a full day. Missing less than a full day could include students arriving late, missing part of a class period at the secondary level, and/or leaving before the end of the school day. Based on our most recent data, we know that attendance at school impacts a student's academic success. Third through eighth grade students who attend school for 95% of the school year were about 50% more likely to be proficient on the NCAS English Language Arts Assessment. Third through eighth grade students who attend school for 95% of the school year were about 90% more likely to be proficient on the NCAS Math Assessment. In 2024, students who were present for 95% or more of their ninth grade year were 46% more likely to graduate on time. At the end of the 2024-25 school year, ninth through 11th grade students who were present for 95% or more of their year were about 57% more likely to be on track for graduation. Chronic absenteeism, represented by the dark blue bars, is defined as students missing 10% or more of their enrolled time. For example, for a 165 school year, 10% or chronically absent would be 16 days. In 2024-25, 38.4% of students missed 10% or more of their enrolled year, a 1.8 percentage point decrease over the 2023-2024 school year. We must continue to drive change, and it is important that we recognize the 31,952 students who attended school regularly and are moving in the right direction. As we reviewed subgroups in absenteeism, Asian and Native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander students have the highest rates of students attending for 95% or more of the school year, followed by white students, both groups increasing from previous years. American Indian or Alaska Native students, 368 in total, have the lowest rates of students attending 95% or more, followed by Black or African-American students, students of two or more races, and Hispanic students. 373 more Black or African-American students attended 95% or more this school year. I apologize, more that school year, an increase of 3%. Current English learners, exited English learners, and refugees were most likely to attend with an increase from last year compared to students not identified as English learners or refugees. This slide shares data with regards to educational benefits, eligibility, and IEPs, Individualized Education Plan status. Students who were not eligible for educational benefits and students who do not have IEPs were more likely to attend 95% or more of the school year compared to students who were eligible for educational benefits and students with IEPs. Our final subgroup reflects the impacts of transportation and absenteeism. Overall, students who receive district-provided transportation in accordance with our student assignment plan were slightly more likely to be chronically absent and less likely to attend for 95% or more of the school year. When this data is segregated by school level, there is very little difference between attendance rates at elementary schools. We do, however, see at both middle and high school that students who are receiving district-provided transportation in accordance with our student assignment plan are more likely to be chronically absent. Transportation appears to play a minimal role in absenteeism and attendance when compared to other factors. As we know from our attendance data presented in the last few slides, we have seen some improvements, and we have work to continue. Attendance remains a priority. In reviewing our previous goal of each school demonstrating an increase of up to 2% and the percentage of students missing fewer than nine days, we saw good work happening, and I would like to spotlight some of the success. At the elementary level, 11 schools increased and 38 schools met their goal, an increase of 27 schools meeting their goal. At the middle school level, three schools increased and eight schools met their goal, an increase of five schools meeting their goal. Five high schools increased and five programs met their goal. Our work continues. We will build on improvements and adjust for greater gains. Our priorities and next steps for this year are as follows. Addressing absenteeism with our students and families through a partnership-focused approach. Fostering positive conditions for learning in all of our schools and classrooms. Continuing to ask, what change can we make that will result in improvement, and how will we know? As improvement science allows all teams to name the specific problem to solve, attempt small changes to improve outcomes, and measure this change using student attendance data to determine if a difference was made. This new approach to our work will allow for quick adjustments to support student attendance. Strengthening department collaboration continues as the Omaha Public Schools works with District Management Group, which is increasing communication between school teams, students, and families, and reinforcing school connectedness as we all are a part of our progress. Local media and inside OPS has highlighted this work underway. We are committed to improving attendance and the opportunity to support our students and families. This concludes an overview of the 2024-25 Attendance and Absenteeism Summary Report. We are happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I always like hearing good news. Any questions from board members? Ms. Fohl.
Thank you. And I apologize, I'm not even sure how to really ask this question, but I do see that there have been improvements. However, I feel like we've been prioritizing absenteeism and how to address it for, I mean, we've always been prioritizing it, but I think in these last few years, since I've been on the board, we've really been going hard with trying to address absenteeism, and like, I'm not seeing the improvements that need to be made, basically. And when we talk about next steps and what we're doing next, I always see the same thing. And so I'm wondering why we keep doing the same thing and are not necessarily seeing improvements that we'd like to see. Because if anything that Mr. Ray has taught me, it's to shoot for the moon and to ask ourselves what we need to be doing in order to make sure that every kid is attending school 100% of the time. So I keep seeing the same things over and over again, and I'm wondering, what are we doing that's new, or is that still kind of in the works? Is that going to be part of this strategic plan about how we move forward?
So one of the themes that we are working on, as I mentioned, with the partnership approach. In the past, it was about, we would often call parents and just let them know, instead of having a two-way conversation. And we are really working hard on being listeners and finding the strength of our students and our families, because they do have strengths, and then how can we build on those strengths? We also are ensuring that everyone knows their value, teachers know their value, staff, all staff know their value. Students have a voice and know their value. We want them engaged and part of the process. And so we are putting systems in place in order to achieve that. I appreciate that we've been working on it for years, and I appreciate that we will continue to work on it, because it is something that is a challenging task. But when students are attending and we are seeing the achievements that we are seeing, it is rewarding.
Thank you. I hope that we can have more conversations about this as it relates to the moonshot. Thank you.
Mr. Tealyn.
Couple of questions. First, the slide on IEP correlation to absenteeism, I'm not sure I understand what to take from that. What are we, with other things we're thinking about, causation and how we can use that to, you know, the relationship between absenteeism and grades? We want to drive better performance by getting kids to attend school. I'm not really sure what to do with this data about the correlation between IEP status and...
So I show, is it slide, are you slide 11 or slide seven? You're saying seven? 11, I believe, IEPs?
Yes, absenteeism, yes.
So, for example, using our attendance dashboard, we filter into different groups so that we can really focus. And so when we look at students who have IEPs, we are looking at, you know, what is, how can we work better with those students if it has to do with an exclusionary practice? What are we putting in place to ensure if a student has an IEP based on whether it's academic or behavior, what can we do differently to ensure they're coming to school more? So we're looking at that data, students with compared to not, so that we can adjust and do, we want thriving environments for all of our students.
That makes a lot of sense. This is about, if I were to tell this back to you, and you can confirm for me, this is about identifying groups that have particular needs and being able to address that group and their particular needs.
Focusing, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
The slide 31. We've, you know, we've, I think we've seen a slide like, this slide or a slide like this for a couple of years. And I, my question is always kind of what's behind these numbers as far as trends with particular schools? Are we seeing schools consistently hit, certain schools consistently hit their, their goals, or are we, or is it kind of just different every year? And we've got some schools that meet it this year, and then next year, they're not in the group, but we've got another group of schools that are meeting. I don't know if you've got that information off the top of your head, but...
I don't have it right in front of me, but I will tell you what we do see is students who have principals who are leading the work, building leadership. When we have whole schools working together, when we have systems in place within the school, we are seeing a continued improvement or holding. It's, it's where we're, we're putting improvements in place when we're not seeing leadership, and I'm not, I'm not saying leadership aren't doing their job. I'm simply saying, we know that when you use the dashboard, when you have weekly meetings, when you work with the, when the principal is leading the work, when you have staff who believe in this work and staff who understand, especially teachers, teachers are the unicorn when it comes to attendance. When everyone is in there together, working together as a team, it can't be up to one person, it can't be up just to the principal, it cannot be up to just the teacher, it's all of us working together. That's when we're seeing that this is working. It's also when we're looking at the data. We really need to look at that data and make an informed decision. And now that we have the attendance dashboard, and now that we have 360 dashboard, we're able to see so many different layers of data and make some really powerful decisions that, again, are impacting our students and providing settings where everyone can learn.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Holman.
Thank you, President Erdnberger. Thank you so much, Ms. Picota, for the presentation. I have a question regarding the difference between unverified and unexcused. Unverified means that we send out the text message, the email, and correct me if I'm wrong, the text message, the email, or the automated calls, and we did not hear back from a parent or guardian, correct?
Correct. So we have three types of absences, excused, unexcused, and exempt. And so unverified falls into an unexcused absence. An unverified means that we have not heard from a parent or guardian for the reason for the absence. And it could be a phone call, it could be a text message, it could be someone actually at the school picking up and calling. It could be a student who's come in late to school and no one has identified why they're late, and so that is an unverified absence. We have not had a communication with an adult, parent, or guardian.
And obviously, I know what the definition of unexcused is, but how would one become unexcused?
So the Board of Education has a policy where we have a list of eight excused absences, and then we have the unexcused absences. And in order for us to better define the barriers to attendance and align resources, we, within Infinite Campus, have determined there are three types of unexcused absences. Unverified, which we were just alluding to about not having a communication with an adult. An absence where you do call in and you communicate with us, and we're very thankful. However, it might be that it's Kami's birthday today, so we're celebrating and going somewhere for my birthday, or we're going out of town, right? A parent has that, that right to make that decision, but that is an unexcused absence because it does not categorize into one of our excuse, eight excused absences. And then we have truant, where a parent has reported refusal, or a student is at school and has, is refusing to attend class, or has left the building. And so that would be one of the three for an unexcused absence.
Thank you for the clarification, for my sake, and then also for the public's case they also had confusion about it as well. So thank you.
Sure, and feel free to call schools. Our attendance teams are happy to answer those questions. Our school support liaisons, counselors, social workers are happy to talk about attendance. We, we want that communication.
And I did have one other question as well. Going back to the different modes of communication where we try to contact parents and guardians. So we have auto attendance calls from all diff, for all the different levels, texts and emails for secondary, and then it says follow-up phone calls by attendance secretary. Is that just specifically for elementary as a follow-up phone call, or do the other...
It could be any level. And it really is based on staffing, FTEs available. We also have schools that they have a system in place where if a student has missed a certain number of days, teachers are asked to call and reach out. And then we also would be remiss if we didn't mention campus parents. We have a layered approach. Campus parent, as parents receive that app, sign up for that app, they can have notifications sent directly to the phone. That's real-time attendance data. So in addition to campus parent, you have those phone calls, you have the texting for the secondary level, and then you have the phone calls from the school.
Is it expected that there is a follow-up phone call?
When we haven't heard from a parent, it is expected to follow up, to find out what that absence is. And also to follow up with the student. When we are talking about our middle school and secondary students or high school students, they need to be part of these conversations so they can understand what attendance, how it can lead their path. Thank you.
Vice President Snipes.
Thank you, President Erdnberger, and thank you for this presentation. I have a few questions. Dr. Holman made me just think about this a little bit. So the one code auto converts to unverified after a certain amount of weeks, correct?
So if we haven't heard anything for three weeks, or we haven't been able to find out a reason, we do have an... find out a reason, we do have an auto process, but we, we ask schools on a daily basis to update that information, as much information as, as they know.
Okay. Cause what I was really wondering is like, when that does happen, and I'm glad to hear that, um, how are we making sure like, the data doesn't like artificially like inflate the unverified? I wonder if it's like, um, hiding real reasons like illness, work, things like that. Um, regarding the collaborative attendance improvement plans, how many students had a plan this year? And what do we know about, um, how these plans are actually like reducing absences?
So as of this morning, 3,195 students, uh, were eligible for a collaborative attendance improvement plan, and we have completed 1,222. It takes time.
Yeah, oh, no, of course.
It takes time to, uh, reach out to those, uh, I just mean, the amount of time, like just trying to get with our families. I, I, I will tell you, you know, just last week, one staff member, uh, with another staff member completed 13 home visits. And so we're, we're trying everything that we can to connect with our families wherever they're at. Um, but, uh, we're trying to take from that, the, the barrier to attendance and what that reason is. One thing that we did do this year that I'm very proud of is we added a barriers dashboard to our attendance dashboard. It's new, so now that we're tracking that information in the collaborative attendance improvement plan, if a CAPE has been written on a student in your school, members of the attendance team and administrators can go and they can start seeing the trend of the barriers of attendance to their school, which is very important.
Thank you for that. And I fully always believe that you all are doing whatever is necessary. So I should have prefaced that. And you really answered my next question, because I did see in the full report, you know, listing behaviors like behavioral health, homelessness, transportation, neglecting these different things. And so I was wondering like how we're tracking which barriers are most common, right? And, um, which supports are most effective for that. Um, in there also with the, um, Strategic Plan of Action goal, um, around the ethic of care, it says that, um, it's the final year, so I was just wondering what the new like attendance metrics or whatever it would be to replace that since it's the last year.
So it, it's still being built, but our goal is for students to attend 95% or more of the school year. We know the impacts it has academically, socially, and emotionally for our students. Um, it also has a ripple effect for our teachers and all students in the school, whether you're chronically absent or not, it impacts every student in that school, the culture of the school. And, um, so our goal is 95% missing nine days or less during the school year. And, uh, in the event that that is, uh, not happening, working with our families, trying to address the barriers to the best of our ability. We also know that our situations where students do have to miss, if they're attending therapy and that is something they need for their social, emotional well-being, um, then we work with the parents and we work with the students. And, and we're just supportive wraparound services are so crucial for all of our students and our families.
One more question, this is a, I promise. Um, I see in there, and I'm, I see this often, the ELS and the refugee, um, students actually have better attendance. And so I'm just wondering, are there any practices from those programs that can be replicated across the district? Do we know what drives that? Um, it can be used in schools that are just struggling?
I will have to get back to that. I don't, I don't have a real...
Thank you.
...uh, deep dive into that, but that is a trend that we've seen over the last few years.
Uh, take your time.
Yeah, I will, I will appreciate that.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much. You do? Oh, Superintendent Ray, take it away.
First, thank you very much for this presentation. And I do have to acknowledge, uh, Ms. Pocota's work, probably the longest-serving person that has consistently worked on attendance in the district. So thank you for that.
Thank you for the opportunity.
She shows up. She's...
No, she's consistently attending. But is it your...
At least 95% of the time.
She, she's more of a 100% person. Um, I do, I want to go back to Bree's comment a little bit about doing things different. So I want to go back, if you could go back to slide two for a second?
Sure.
So I want to jump up back to two. So this is the end of last year's slide. So we committed this year, um, no, I know you're not, this time.
So sorry.
Um, so on slide two is how we ended last year's presentation. So we told you last year what we were going to do this year. And so we're, we were committed to not just coming to the board table and telling you again what we're going to just try harder to do again. And so this is what we told you we would do. And so this is a report of showing you the results of this work. So Kami spoke about the results and the success of this work. And the end slide is to tell you what's different. And so, um, Kami talked about the difference, the, the improvement science and the work that we're going to do different. But we're committed to any, all of our presentations that we're not just going to tell you, we're having conversations, we're going to do more of the same, but we're just going to do it harder, um, or differently. So this is the difference. The Board of Education approved a change in board policy around attendance and, and removing some of those compliance things to allow us to do things differently. And, um, I've talked about this before at the board table, that attendance in the Omaha Public Schools has been an issue since the Omaha Public Schools has been in its existence. Since 1886, we have records that we kept track of five-day, 10-day, 15, and 20-day milestones. 20-day milestones was an issue in 1886, and we recorded it in 1886. And 18...
You remember?
I was, I was there, yes. But you were a student. Um, and so we, we kept it. I mean, so this, this will be an issue as long as we exist, and we had an opportunity this year to tell you about improvement. And next year, we don't know, but we're trying different things, and we'll still be talking about it probably in 50 years from now, um, because it, it's been an issue, but we haven't legalized absenteeism. Um, and we'll continue to work on it, but it's been an issue since the district existed, and we're trying different things to make a difference. So I thank you, Kami, for all your work and your commitment to being flexible. Wink. And trying to make things happen differently, um, and, and sharing those successes. So thank you.
Ms. Poc.
I just want to say I do appreciate the work that you have been doing, and I didn't mean to demean that at all. I appreciate what you're doing on absenteeism.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the work that our schools, our staff, our families, and our students are doing. And so it's really about all of them. I'm here and at the TAC building, and I have the opportunity every now and again to get out into the buildings, and that's really where all of this is happening, and so they really deserve all the credit.
That's great. Thank you for raising, uh, the people's awareness of how important and what the outcomes can be. Thank you very, very much. Appreciate it. Uh, Ms. Magnuson, did you have a message for anybody, or do you want to?
I was just trying to help.
Do you want to give your, uh, budget committee update? You want to just type it in?
Thank you, President Erdenberger. I will try to be louder so everyone can hear. Um, so as most people know, um, each year our district budget is funded primarily through property taxes, state aid, and other grants. Um, whether a school district receives state aid and how much aid they receive is determined by a formula set out in Nebraska's Tax Equity and Educational Opportunities Support Act, also known as TOSA. So the Budget and Audit Committee met on November 10th to review some information from the Nebraska Department of Education. They called us, or more specifically, they called our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Shane Ryan, over here, um, to report that they had made an error in how state aid was calculated for the 2025-26 school year. Um, the miscalculation, uh, was related to the reporting of students directly certified by the State of Nebraska as being eligible for free lunches in the National School Lunch Program for schools and districts participating in the community eligibility provision of that program. Uh, this, this reporting error impacted 21 school districts across the state for the original calculation of TOSA for the 2025-26 school year. Um, again, this is not an error made by Omaha Public Schools. But when NDE, our Nebraska Department of Education, corrected this information as part of their normal recalculation of TOSA, uh, in November, this month, they determined that the poverty allowance for OPS was overstated, and that TOSA should have been 309 million for the current year, which is 30.5 million less than the amount originally certified of 340 million. So in plainer language, um, the miscalculation meant that Omaha Public Schools received $30.5 million too much in state aid for this school year. The NDE said it will address their error by subtracting 30.5 million from the state aid provided to our district for next year, which includes a clot back. So with a lower level of state aid and the subtraction on top of it, the total impact to our 26-27 budget is currently estimated to be $61.00 million, which is not chump change. It's a significant challenge for us to overcome. Um, assuming the TOSA, that's assuming the TOSA amount for the 2026-27 school year is comparable with the recalculated amount for this year. So there are some variables to that. Um, they will not release their numbers until January 2026, so we don't truly know the true impact, um, until they release their preliminary model of TOSA for the 26-27 school year in January. Um, but that's what we're, that's what our estimation is. Based on some preliminary forecasts, um, we could make up approximately 54.7 million of that reduction, um, by an offset, uh, by way of an increase in the levy. But that would mean the levy would return to $1.005, which is a 0.09 increase over the current year's levy. Uh, Mr. Ryan shared in that meeting, uh, some preliminary revenue and expense projections for the 2026-27 school year and a revised long-term forecast through the 2029-2030 school year. Um, and he will update those forecasts as new information becomes available and as the administration begins, uh, budget development, uh, in January. So additionally, administration has already contacted the Speaker of the Legislature and all of our state senators that represent OPS to inform them of the situation. And tonight, the admin also sent a communication to all staff and families this evening to inform them of the situation. That concludes my update.
Oh, Mr. Ryan, we have a question for you, please.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Magnuson. We don't want to, you're, you're just the messenger.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, so I had a question about our levy decreases over the last couple of years and as it relates to legislative changes that were made, um, specifically about our cap, basically. So my question is, if we had not lowered our levy in 2023, 2024, or 2024, 2025, would we be able to make up the full amount of this loss, um, because we didn't lower our levy and we were able to increase it more because of that annoying cap and percentage that we can only raise it every year? You, do you understand what I'm trying to say?
So I'm going to say it a different way.
Okay, please do.
So it would have been unlikely that if TOSA was calculated correctly in 2023-24 and 2024-25, that we would have been able to propose a levy for your approval that would have reduced the levy by 11 cents for the 24-25 school year. We probably would have been required to lower it by some amount during that year because of the revenue caps passed in 2023, but it would have been unlikely to have been 11 cents.
Okay. So I just want to reiterate, this is not all of our fault that your, um, taxes is going to be going up next year. This, um, you know, is an error that has been made, and for some reason, you know, people just love to give us extra money. I don't know what it is about us, but, um, it ends up, uh, screwing us over in the end. So you could, um, double-check your math all the time. Not you, Mr. Ryan, I'm not going to talk about you. I'm indirectly talking about, um, other people involved in this situation, uh, at the state. So, uh, anyways, thank you for answering my question.
You're welcome.
While he's up at the podium, anybody else have any questions for Mr. Ryan about what happens next? I'm assuming that part of the confusion was because there was sort of a mismatch between the state's understanding of what our poverty levels were because of our CEP designation? And so they didn't, they misunderstood what poverty levels they were supposed to be looking at and calculating.
So NDE has provided some information on the nature of the error, um, but I think it prudent to let them provide the exact explanation as we move forward. Um, I will say that in my conversations with, uh, NDE staff, um, they have been, um, no one is more concerned about this error than they are. Having worked at the department for several years, um, I know the diligence that they put into their work. Uh, this is an extremely unfortunate error, and the magnitude, uh, of the error is, um, going to be difficult for us to work through in the coming years. But I'll let them speak to the exact nature of the error and the causes of that.
And if I remember correctly, for a brief moment in time, we thought maybe they had gotten it wrong, and you went back with them and went through it line by line before we determined that it was what it was.
We did have multiple conversations with, uh, NDE staff to, uh, better understand the error and the nature of it, and reestablish a, a firm understanding of the poverty allowance moving forward. So yes, hopefully we can prevent something like this from happening again in the future.
Thank you very much. I'm very sorry you're going to have to move all the deck chairs on, the chairs on the deck, uh, to the tune of $60 million. Uh, any other questions?
I do.
Oh, and Ms. Magnuson.
Um, so is the NDE going to have like a press release or anything like that, or is it simply a document release that we have to watch for?
Um, I am unaware of, uh, any actions by NDE to address this publicly moving forward. I think it's safe to assume that with the communication going out to our, uh, staff and families, that we might receive some inquiries tomorrow, and we'll address them to the best of our abilities, and I'm sure that NDE will do that as well on their end.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, and we appreciate, uh, you being at the helm. Uh, next we have Dr. Holman reporting on TOSA and the School Finance Review Commission.
Speaking of TOSA and NDE, uh, we had our last meeting on October 31st in Lincoln. Um, the meeting was divided into three phases. The first was the discussion of the timeline that the commission needs to hit. I reviewed that timeline with you all during my last report. Our first deadline is December 1st, uh, when we will have to submit our initial report to the legislature. The second phase involved review of the data that had previously been gathered and distributed to the committee. That data included state versus local school district revenue, total property taxes paid trend, and average general fund expenditure update. We met in small groups to analyze that data and then reported out our takeaways to the larger group. The final phase of our meeting involved reviewing new information provided to us by NDE. This included the 2024 School Property Tax Collection Report, which has been prepared by the Governor's Policy Research Office, as well as a comparison of the state tax and property valuation structures prepared by the Nebraska Department of Revenue. That analysis compared the various methods used to fund state government, corporate tax, income tax, and sales tax, et cetera, and the applicable rates across multiple states, including Arkansas, Colorado, Iowa, Kansas, Missouri, Montana, Ohio, Oklahoma, South Dakota, Utah, Wisconsin, and Wyoming. We were also provided with a report from NDE which covered the following: individual district revenue comparisons, valuation per student information, and state comparable valuation information. We met in small groups to analyze that data and then reported out our takeaways to the larger group. There was a lot of very interesting information in the various reports, and I would encourage you all to visit, um, NDE's website where you can find all those materials, um, that have been presented to the commission. They're always available for, um, anyone's review. In addition, there is a link to the NDE YouTube channel where you can watch each of the meetings of the commission in its entirety if you would like, or you can also join as well. Um, the next meeting of the commission will be... The next meeting of the commission will be tomorrow, and our focus is on finalizing our initial report to the legislature. And I will provide you with an update from that meeting on December 15th. Happy to take any questions.
Could you remind me when the report to the legislature is due?
December 1st.
Oh, so that's December 1st, so.
Yes.
Your meeting tomorrow to finalize.
Yes. There's lots, there's been so many different reports, because we can pretty much ask for any sort of data that we want just about. And so we've gotten a collection of all sorts of different materials that, I would say that this meeting, our past meeting, was probably the most in-depth meeting that we have had, as far as actually digging into numbers and having some very fruitful conversations with regards to what we are looking for, what we, goals, and things that we may try to aim for, so.
Well, thank you and good luck, and thank you very much for serving on that commission. Any other questions? Okay, then, believe it or not, we'd have no action items tonight, so I'm going to just say there is one receipt of report on the agenda this evening, which is the official membership, the enrollment numbers for each of our schools. And now, moving on to closed session, Ms. Snipes. Sorry.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Chief of Staff, Dr. Collette Nero, Shane Ryan, and Legal Counsel, Negotiations, and Legal Advice.
Thank you. I have a motion to go into closed session by Ms. Snipes and a second by.
Second.
Very much, Ms. Magnuson. Roll call, please.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Burtonberger.
Aye.
Bowles.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Magnuson.
Aye.
Aye.
Seven, aye.
Excellent. Motion carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Chief of Staff, Dr. Collette Nero, Mr. Shane Ryan, and Legal Counsel, Negotiations, and Legal Advice. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 7:46 PM.
Let the record reflect, the board came out of closed session at 8:48 PM. And let the record reflect that the board meeting adjourned at 8:48 PM. Thank you very much for your time.